Meeting. We have a link for live broadcast and people will be watching online. So I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have some students from Veterans Memorial who will be leading us in the pledge. Mrs. DePere, was there anything you wanted to say first?
I'll introduce them after the pledge since everybody stood up.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now let's hear about our fine students that led us in the pledge.
Tonight, we have Krishana Lise Torres-Lugo, who's in 5th grade in Miss Shoemakers class. She wants you to know that reading is her favorite subject. She loves how all her teachers are protective and have fun with the students while they learn. Her favorite thing to do outside of school is to read and to color. Catalia Medina is in 4th grade in Miss Simmons' class. Math is her favorite subject, and she says that all of her teachers are really good at teaching. For fun, she likes to play outside, and she also likes to color. Courtney Medina is in 2nd grade in Mrs. Tarwater's class. Math is her favorite subject, and she likes all of her teachers at Veterans Memorial. Her favorite thing to do outside of school is to play with her sister and her cousins. Clay Rosa Lugo is in 2nd grade in Mrs. Tarwater's class. Clay has a great personality and is really starting to come out of his shell in school. He is really excited to see his siblings and cousins in the hallway. Derek Rosa Lugo is in 1st grade in Mrs. Dobles' class, and Derek's favorite subjects are math and gym. Derek really likes his new friend Mason, who he met this year at Veterans. For fun, Derek loves to play on his tablet. A special thank you to Shana Lugo for bringing them tonight. Shana is Chris, Derek, and Clay's mom, and Catalia and Courtney's aunt. Thank you. I also want to say that all five of these students are new to Veterans Memorial this year, and they are all very hardworking and exemplary Eagles, and I love to watch them soar. So thank you for allowing me to introduce them to you tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. DePere, and thank you, children. Very well done. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, Special Presentations. Dr. Madison?
Great, thank you, President Hein. January represents a very special month in Pennsylvania as it is School Board Appreciation Month, and we are very excited and proud to have a couple presentations this evening to have our students and our staff show the appreciation for the time and effort to the community that this school board shows and represents every single meeting and every single day for our community. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Brenda Dorenzo, and she's going to introduce our students. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and happy Board Appreciation Night. I think it's rather appropriate that we are going to present tonight our Kindness Crusade Initiative to all of you. You exemplify kindness. Being a board member is often without fanfare, countless hours, and you certainly aren't paid for all the time and effort you put in. We wanted to let you know that we appreciate all you do and your kindness to all of us that we see all the time when you're here, when you're at our functions, when you're supporting us, and we just want to tell you how much we truly appreciate you. We hope you enjoy the next presentation. Our Kindness Crusade sprung out of the need to reconnect with the community after being away during COVID. Each school building reached out and did a community outreach project. You'll get to see some of them tonight. We will be showcasing these projects at our Arts Festival in the spring. So sit back, enjoy, and I'm going to introduce Karen DePere back to the microphone.
Catalia and Krishana Lise are going to help me introduce the elementary video.
Kindness is defined as the quality of being friendly, generous, and considerate to others. All nine of the Parkland Elementary Schools participated in the Kindness Crusade. Through our participation, and the crusade students across the district saw firsthand the positive benefits of being kind towards others.
Whether it was collecting items for animals, raising money for cancer, growing plants, or any of the other amazing practices completed by the schools, Parkland students learned different ways to show kindness and think of others. We're honored to present all of Parkland's elementary students tonight to present a video showcasing the Kindness Crusade Project to our schools. Please enjoy their presentation.
Hi, I'm Archie deCarlo. Elizabeth Schrock is our mom, and she's an interior designer for St. Luke's. The art teacher, Mrs. Burns, led students in different projects when my mom did the venue. Mrs. Burns is the art teacher, and she inspires kids to have fun and learn what the craft is. She's always there to help you, no matter what.
And so what did your mom use the latest craft?
She used it for her new building. And last year, actually, I made a craft, and while she used it for her building, so...
So she used our school's art projects to decorate the new building, right?
Yeah. Thanks to our mom.
And thanks to Mrs. Burns, right?
Also thanks to Mrs. Burns.
We got, wait, me, I got one more thing to say. Even though St. Luke's has a body chip different kits, we are all the Fogelsville family.
Oh, that's true.
Yes, very much.
The new St. Luke's Pediatric Specialty Building is set to open in April 2022. The art Fogelsville students created with Mrs. Burns is being transferred to acrylic and cut into shapes and animals that go with different themes throughout the building, like mountains and clouds, underwater, animals of different continents, and outer space. Sometimes going to the doctor can be a nerve-wracking experience. We're grateful to Mrs. Burns and Miss Schrock for providing our students the opportunity to partner with St. Luke's in creating a friendly, positive space where children in the community can get the medical help they need.
Hello, board members. I'm Christine Bankos, the school counselor at Kratzler Elementary. I'm here to introduce our plant kindness project, along with two of our 5th grade students, Shannon Lawler and Paige Beller. A seed was planted this past summer when we saw several Kratzler students partnering with the Rotary Club to weed and harvest food at a local garden. The vegetables they collected were donated to the Parkland Hairs Food Bank and in return went back to the Parkland families. We loved the interest that the students and families showed in gardening, so we decided to expand upon that in school.
Did you note that, on average, food travels 1,300 miles from farm to fork? We can reduce that by starting a community garden, not to mention the physicology benefits of gardening. It improves life satisfaction that helps us cope with stress. It improves our ability to recover from illness, injury, and improves pro- productive rate. Sounds great.
We reached out to Gail Mika from the Allentown Rotary Club and came up with the idea of having the students create seed pops similar to lollipops. They can easily plant in their soil at home. Thank you to the Rotary Club for the donation of the soil and seeds.
We enjoyed getting our hands dirty by mixing clay, potting soil, seeds, and water to form balls, which we put onto sticks to resemble lollipops. Once dried, the pops are then planted into soil, cared for, and grown. Some of us created herb pops such as basil and aruba.
Since spring is the prime planting time, we will extend the seed pop production to all students with the hope of growing yummy vegetables and beautiful flowering plants. Our goal is for the students to not only spark an interest in gardening, but to then share the bounty of their harvest with family and friends. Who doesn't appreciate fresh-grown tomatoes or cucumbers from a neighbor? Or a bouquet of colorful flowers from your grandchildren on your kitchen table? Simple gifts such as these can bring a smile to someone's face, and that is how we will spread kindness at Kratzler.
Hi, I'm Molly from Mrs. Dings 5th Grade Class.
And hi, I'm Rishi from Mrs. Dings 5th Grade Class.
First, we'd like to thank our school board for all of your hard work and dedication in making Parkland the best school district there is.
Yeah, we appreciate you in every single thing you do, so thank you so much. So now, let's talk a little bit about Jendel's Kindness Crusade Project.
Our school decided to show kindness in our community, partnering with the Sanctuary Hospital for the Kindness Crusade.
The Sanctuary Hospital is a nonprofit animal shelter that also partners with other animal shelters. Our school is so excited to help out the sanctuary this year.
The September was our first donation drive, and what a huge success it was. Volunteers collected donations through curbside drop-off on a beautiful Saturday morning.
And during the month of December, as part of Jendel's Giving Tree, donations were collected for the sanctuary. And this time, a few of our students and parents were able to visit the sanctuary and meet some of their amazing cats and dogs.
This spring, we are looking forward to hopefully having our culminating Kindness Crusade event. Go to the Parkland High School. Here are a few more pictures from our Kindness Crusade service director. We hope you enjoy them.
We've created an amazing Kindness Crusade mural here at Jendel showcasing our teachers and staff's amazing animals.
Here's Mr. Rockman with a few of our students during our summer donation drive, and here's Miss Brokeate with me and my sister during our September drive.
And here are a few pictures from our visit to the sanctuary. And thank you so much, Ms. Jen, for showing us around and giving us talk with the adorable cats and dogs.
We hope you enjoyed our presentation. Thank you again for your time and dedication.
And thank you for all you do. Bye.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Sagata. I'm the school counselor at Ironton Elementary School. And for our Kindness Crusade, we collected uniform items for Ramos Elementary School in the Allentown School District. Our student council played a huge role in this project. They helped to get the word out by visiting classrooms and distributing flyers. As uniform items came in, they inventoried them so we knew what we were donating. And we had one student go above and beyond to make sure our project was a success. Her name is Mackenzie Lugiano, and I'm going to play a video of her explaining what she did.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Lugiano. I'm a 4th grade student at Ironton and a student council member. When I heard about the project, I started thinking about how I could help more. My aunt works at Target, so I called her and asked if they would be willing to help us. She told me to write a letter explaining our Kindness Crusade Project. Target wrote back to me and said they would donate $500 for us to shop for uniform items. After she encountered inventorying items, we went shopping for what we needed. I feel like the Kindness Crusade went very well, and we couldn't have done it without everyone's help. Thank you.
In the end, 156 uniform items were collected for Ramos. We ended up collecting 85 shirts, 67 pants, and four sweaters. And the counselor from Ramos sent us a picture of the shelves before and after, which the students really liked seeing. And she also sent a thank you note that read, "Thank you very much for your generous donation of uniforms for the students at Ramos Elementary School. We appreciate the work you put into organizing the uniform drive. You all demonstrate how to care for others in your Lehigh Valley community. I hope that you all have a wonderful new year and know that your work has helped make life a little easier for others. Warm regards, Mrs. Aharakas, School Counselor at Ramos." Thank you.
Todd Beidelman, School Counselor at Veterans Memorial, with the help of students Emma Duffy, Chloe Samarko, and Elijah McCollin to share our Kindness Crusade experience. Veterans Memorial developed a community partnership with the Kindness Project, a volunteer-run, donation-based nonprofit headquartered locally in Imaeus. The Kindness Project supports foster children and families throughout the Lehigh Valley by providing any and all items you can think of, free of charge, to help defray the costs of care. The goal of our Kindness Crusade was to collect whatever we could to help support their amazing mission. This was truly a collaborative effort, and we could not be more grateful to our incredible Veterans Memorial families and community. Chloe, can you please share what our Kindness Crusade entailed?
Our crusade involved three steps. First, we had a collection drive requesting items of immediate need, including shoes, clothing, duffel bags, beds in a bag, and educational and recreational items. We also held a building-wide coin drive. Last, all students contributed by painting kindness rocks, which will decorate the kindness Project's facility so that when children and families visit, they will be welcomed by our crafted messages of kindness, care, compassion, and perseverance. Emma, so what all did we collect?
Through our collection drive, we donated more than 156 items of immediate need, and we collected $1,426.61 for our coin drive, plus an additional $1,000 from a separate direct donation from a veterans' family.
Lastly, please enjoy just a small collection of the kindness rocks our students created, and a final word from Elijah, a 5th grade student explaining the purpose and heartfelt meaning behind the rock he created that exemplifies the type of uplifting messaging we were aiming for.
The message I decorated on my rock says evolve. I made this rock to tell people how you can always be better at anything. The only person you should try to be better than is the person you were yesterday.
Hi, my name is Julian.
And my name is Lexi. We're 5th grade students at Kratzler. We recently had a free car wash for our frontline workers. Our school chose frontline workers because we felt that they are working very hard. We wanted to do something kind in return. We sent flyers out to doctors' offices, healthcare facilities, and first responders. 4th and 5th grade students washed cars with teachers and staff. We took turns washing cars, building signs, and drawing positive messages on the sidewalk. The car wash signs were made by younger students in our school. We also had thank you cards made by kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade students to go to our frontline workers. They were so happy to receive the cards. After the event, we donated all of our towels to Peaceful Kingdom Animal Shelter so that they could be used in another way, too. My favorite part of the event was drying the coyote, and I loved holding the signs.
My favorite part was drying the coyote, washing the cars, and seeing the five trucks that came through. I had so much fun for doing something nice. I had a great time with my friends.
This is Jamie McFannell, School Counselor at Parkway Manor. At our school, we believe that kindness changes our community. Not only is this our building theme that we selected for the year, but it's also how we chose to structure our school-wide project for the Kindness Crusade. Every Parkway Manor student spent time this fall planning and then painting a kindness rock which displayed a positive message or words of inspiration. The hashtag #PMROCKSLV, which stands for Parkway Manor Rocks, Lehigh Valley, was included on the back of each rock, and this helps to tie our school-wide project together.
Upon completion of the project, students took their rocks home with the help of their families and planted their kindness rocks in over 20 different locations across our local community. Some of the locations where you might find your rocks include Leggins, Parkland Community Library, Cedar Brook, Hamilton Crossings, and Ricky Ridge Park, just to name a few.
Through the use of our unique hashtag, we are able to share the purpose of our project as well as invite others to follow along as our rocks make their way around the Lehigh Valley. The purpose is simple: take one when you need one, share one with a friend who needs some inspiration, or pick one up and leave it somewhere else. A little kindness can go a long way in changing someone's day.
Our hope is that when someone comes across one of our rocks, the word will serve as a reminder for those it might need the most. Smile, believe, don't give up, breathe. We invite you to follow along on our Instagram page, @PMROCKSLV, where you can follow our kindness rock journey of spreading hope and happiness during times when they are needed the most.
Thank you for your time and to all of our partners who helped to make our project possible.
I'm Damian Goodman, the principal at Schnecksville Elementary School, and I wanted to talk to you about the Kindness Closet, which was the event we held for the Kindness Crusade for the Parkland School District. About a year ago, we decided that we would hold a clothing drive for families at Schnecksville Elementary School. When this project was first presented to us, we were told that we needed to get together and have an event where we would give back to the community. And we thought what we would do is collect donated clothing items that we would sort and have community members come in and choose any item that they would like to have during the event. The committee met multiple times to decide how we were going to run the event, where we would run the event, what we would do with clothing, where to house it, how to get it donated. We even had to decide who was going to be involved with this event. One of the nice things that we had here at Schnecksville Elementary School was the student council was involved with helping us create signs, figure out what clothing we should have sorted in certain areas. They did a lot of the behind-the-scenes works to help us out. So that was our start to the middle portion of our program. And now I'd like to turn it over to Brandy McFarland, who's going to talk about our end product with the Kindness Closet.
Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Goodman. As he said, I'm Brandy McFarland, the school counselor here at Schnecksville. And kindness is always our mission at Schnecksville. It's one of our shark rules. It's the K in our shark. It's also part of what we celebrate every week with our Kindness is Jawsome mission and initiative here, how we unite as a staff. So the Kindness Crusade was just a natural thing for us to want to participate in, and the idea of a closet was unique in that it wasn't gathering funds, but gathering items to really reach out to our community and help those in need, because we know we have a lot of it. We also thought it would be critical to do that prior to the holiday and winter season to help those in need provide those items as gifts to their families, or to use those warm weather items such as hats, coats, gloves, and other warm weather-type things that we collected as well, even shoes and boots. So ultimately, we met as a staff, just about bi-weekly or as needed. The committee of volunteers would show up and really brainstorm how we could make this an amazing event. We sought out donations from community. We were able to get a bunch of clothing racks to help us organize our items. Luckily, we had a large area to help us organize the items on tables by sizes. So once those items came in and all the donations were collected, we were able to have everything laundered. We got those things back, and as Mr. Goodman stated, they were sorted into the types and categories and sizes, and our staff came together to really help to fold and organize things. It really turned out to be a beautiful event that night. One of the things the committee decided to do was also offer up a gift bag for everyone to use to collect their items in as they were shopping. So everyone got a Kindness is Jawsome Schnecksville Elementary School bag to shop with. But as families came that evening, they were able to leave with boxes upon boxes of things. They were so grateful. There was a lot of gratitude expressed for that. They just couldn't believe what we were doing for them, and I think that really felt good to our whole community. The PTO left holiday decorations for us. It was really just a beautiful thing to see our community come out, take what they needed, and know that it's in the hands of people who need it the most. Our next step, because kindness never ends, is to find out what we're going to be doing with any leftover items at this time and how we're going to also contribute that to our greater Parkland community.
Hello, my name is Zachary Volchko, and I'm in 5th grade at Sitrionia. I'm excited to share Sitrionia's Kindness Crusade Project. This is a video clip of Miss Garcia-Nath telling the Parkland community about our project.
And welcome to What Makes You Smile Day at Sitrionia. And we thought about all of the children out in the world that struggle with fighting cancer. So our committee decided that we were going to work with the Pediatric Cancer Foundation of the Lehigh Valley, and specifically their Camp Smile.
When I found out we were going to help children with cancer by collecting money for Camp Smile, I felt excited. Camp Smile gives kids with cancer an opportunity to have a camp with a lot of fun activities like swimming, our projects, dancing, magic shows, and even visits from the Disney characters. The donation days were a lot of fun. We put money into a container and voted for what made us smile more. Each day, the results and the total money collected were shared on Headhog Headlines. My class loved hearing the results and watching the teachers act silly.
Hi, Headhogs. We're here today to share the results of What Makes You Smile More. Ask remember what's for spring or summer, and the big winner was... ...summer!
Take a look at some of the fun activities that made us smile as we celebrated our hard work collecting donations for Camp Smile.
And four stations the kids will be visiting, dancing with Hedgie and the high school dance team, where they'll be dancing with bubbles. Behind us, we have hula hoops. They're formed as a smile, and they're trying to toss bean bags into the hula hoops. We have kindness charades, another station, where the last one on our walking trail, everyone will get a piece of chalk and they'll get to write a word that brings a smile to our face.
I hope you enjoyed this video and it brought a smile to your face. This is our Kindness Crusade Committee presenting a check to PCFLV for $4,075. We are so proud.
From the, thank you again from the elementary schools for supporting us in our Kindness Crusade projects. And I'd like to turn the program over to Mr. Todd Gombos from Orfield Middle School.
At the middle school level, we'll be highlighting two different programs tonight. Just know that both schools participate in them both. Orfield Middle School's Take a Stand Band, which is a major part of our anti-bully program, and you'll see a video which will give you direct insight into why it's been such a big thing for the students, is what we were going to do is provide a free concert at the Kindness Crusade. I thought what would be best is we have former Orfield Middle School student and Parkland senior Isaac Daniels was a part of it as a student and a part of it as a band member, and he's going to just share a little perspective.
I'm Isaac. I'm a senior at the high school, and I have a fairly unique position of being both a student for the band program and a performer. I always looked forward to playing in the band, and I came back at least two years when I was in high school to come back to play at the middle school, and I was always looking forward to that. And judging by the way the students were always dancing to the music, I think it's safe to say that they were always excited for it, too, which I think is the major goal of the program, which is to kind of get the kids excited for this, to get them to remember it, to look forward to it, and so that the message sticks in their mind that they, that they, the Take a Stand Band and the anti-bullying message that goes along with that. And I think it's a nice idea to bring the teachers together for something that they enjoy that can also benefit the students. So we have a video to showcase this event.
I'm Monica Ollie, Assistant Principal at Orfield Middle School. On behalf of the staff and administration at Orfield, we would like to extend a huge thank you to the Parkland School Board for all that they do for Parkland School District, and more specifically, for their continued support of the Orfield Bullying Prevention Program. What started off as a suggestion to some of our staff members who are musicians to play music for the students on that day of the kickoff, they took the idea and ran with it and created what we now call the Take a Stand Band.
Hi, my name's Jen Hauck. I've been a member of the Take a Stand Committee since the beginning. Every year, we take a theme based on the Olvea's Anti-Bullying Program. We take that theme and we put together several events, and I think one of the best events each year is the Take a Stand Band. And the reason that it's fun is because the students all day learn about a topic that we choose, whether it's resilience, just being kind, or pledging to make sure that we stand up against bullying. They come together, and it's a chance for them not only to form relationships, but have a good time to... have a good time to solidify our relationships with one another and how we should treat each other.
Hi, I'm Matthew Carlson, school psychologist at Orfield Middle School. I'm one of the members of the Take a Stand Band. During the concert, the band gives out messages, positive messages around being kind and building friendships. And we also have an intermission where there's a video played that talks about bullying prevention and talking about kindness and compassion. And these messages help to underscore the purpose or the meaning of the day, which is to build a positive community and culture at Orfield Middle School and to reduce bullying.
And what a great way to pull kids together for a common purpose, using music, giving them an outlet to see that they can have fun and also learn something through the whole process of the entire anti-bullying kickoff day, not just the music part, but the other parts of components of it. What a fantastic idea. And it was a lot of fun to see the kids experience those days over the last several years. And I'm sure it's going to be fantastic in the future as well.
I absolutely love being part of the Take a Stand Band at Orfield Middle School. That unifying experience and having them all be happy and watch something new and interesting and it not be kind of just something that they do in the walls of a classroom brings the kids together in a way that I think is so meaningful. Anytime I find that we do that kind of thing with our students, it builds relationships and it gives them common ground. And when they have that common ground, in my experience, it cuts down on those interactions that are negative between students because they have common ground. They have something that they've all experienced and all enjoyed together as one. So I find that that is really, I think, a highlight for me, and I hope we can keep doing it for years to come because it's really something worthwhile.
I'm Pete Zimmer. I'm the band director at Orfield Middle School. I've been part of the Take a Stand Band since it started, and I'm in charge of what we call the horn section, which is essentially the students that play the band instruments we teach here at school that play in with the group. So although it's rock music and we don't see concert band instruments in with rock music a lot, if we think about bands like Chicago, they had a huge horn section. So we see trombones, trumpets, alto sax, tenor sax. The other element that I think is really cool is that we have the opportunity to bring kids who are older back and kind of show where learning to play an instrument can take you. So, you know, the kids learn how to play an instrument from me in middle school. This style of rock music is actually rather challenging for us as concert band musicians. The keys that they play in are very different. So it kind of shows how as you progress through music and you learn more and more and more elements, you're able to use those to play different styles of music. So we bring a lot of kids from the high school back. It's a great opportunity for me to get to play with some of my former students, which is a lot of fun. And then for the kids in the audience to see students that they look up to in the music program, students that do amazing things at the high school come back and showcase those talents and those abilities.
Hi, my name is Sharon Allen. I am a library paraprofessional here at Orfield Middle School. When I first came here, I had the opportunity to see the Take a Stand Band, and I was really intrigued at how the kids responded to the band. They just loved it. They were enthusiastic. They looked forward to it, and I just knew I wanted to be a part of that.
Hi, my name is Jason Klinger. I am an 8th grade teacher at Orfield, and I am one of the singers of the Take a Stand Band. And I really want to thank you for the opportunity to make our bullying program so amazing here at Orfield. I've taught at some different schools throughout the years, and there is nothing that rivals this program. It is so engaging for students, and it's so awesome to see them building connections with each other. After the show is over, I've had students approach me and talk about music and talk about different things that interest them. And I don't think those things would have happened, those conversations would have happened without this kind of program. So not only does it break down the barriers between students and allow different students to get to know each other better, but it really helps them to get to know their teachers in a new way and allows for better communication among students and teachers, which will also help bullying in the future. So I really am glad that I got this opportunity to do this.
You know, the whole point of this is to inspire, motivate, and get kids up on stage that already play an instrument and that are practiced and well rehearsed, and have them use those skills in a rock and roll setting. And also, for those students that don't, I still remember seeing concerts when I went to school over 40 years ago and teachers performing, and that inspired me to start playing drums. So not only for those people or students that are playing instruments, but also for the kids in the audience that maybe will spark or light that flame to say, you know what? I want to play that guitar. I want to play those drums. I want to get up and sing. I want to perform.
How you doing out there, folks? Mr. Bryant here, recently retired OMS science teacher and former member of the Take a Stand Band. What a great idea. What a great way to bring people together. And you know, with the anti-bullying program, the whole idea is to learn ways for people to get along better. And I truly believe in the power of music to bring people together. You know, they say it's the universal language. So combining the band with the anti-bullying program, just, it's a match that works very, very well. I can't say enough about how great of an idea the Take a Stand Band is, how much fun it is, and what a positive influence it is on the whole school community. So keep rocking, guys. I hope you do it for many more years, and I was really glad to be a part of it. Video did a better job of explaining it and didn't want to do a whole lot because I knew I had most of it covered in there. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sont from Spring House Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Gombos. I am going to speak a little bit about our Parkland Reach program, which, as Mr. Gombos said before, we also run a Take a Stand event at Spring House. And just like that, the Parkland Reach program is also run at Orfield as well as throughout the district. So our Parkland School District faculty, staff, and students have come together to design a program that allows us to serve and reach those students and families in need within the Parkland School District, to providing various resources, all while modeling the Parkland School District mission. And that is to create a safe and secure environment that promotes social and academic growth for all learners. Parkland strives to empower each learner to be a meaningful contributor in a dynamic global society through the collaborative efforts of students, staff, parents, and the Parkland community. Parkland Reach allows us to fulfill this mission by providing assistance to our students and our families in need. The Parkland Reach program began as a vision by Dr. Michelle Minotti and our team while she was principal of Spring House Middle School and I was here as an assistant. We found that more and more of our students needed assistance, and we sprang into action. Students in need were identified and families were contacted, and we rallied our faculty, staff, and students to bring the Reach program to life. We started with weekly snack packs, thanks to generous donations from our local Allentown West Rotary Club, area food banks, and our community. Next, we gathered enough resources to open our pantry on a monthly basis to help those families in need. And additionally, thanks to the efforts of our entire secondary team, Parkland Reach has been able to hold holiday meal food drives, so every family can have a full meal during the holidays. We've also been able to start and adopt a family to purchase gifts for students and family members under the age of 18 during the holiday season. Over the past few years, Parkland Reach has held backpack drives at the start of school. Students receive essential back-to-school supplies so they can return to school confident and ready to learn. Finally, our birthday bags for snack pack students maintained by our student-run Future Cake Club has provided and helped to provide a small gift to recognize our students' special day. Together as a Parkland Reach team, we strive to help our families and students navigate through difficult times by helping them in any way we can. And I'm delighted to be here tonight with three of our 6th grade Spring House Middle School students, Eliza Province, Jade Caravello, and Mia Jenkins, who have been instrumental in our program during the short time that they have attended Spring House Middle School. Eliza, Jade, and Mia have worked very hard behind the scenes, because you always need behind-the-scenes worker to make a big, workers to make a big program successful. And they've worked behind those scenes, and it's my pleasure to have them here tonight to tell you about what they do to help our Parkland Reach program achieve that success.
Hi, my name is Jade Caravello.
My name is Mia Jenkins.
My name is Eliza Province. We're in 6th grade at Spring House. We are in Mrs. Thompson's 7th period infotech class.
Once we are finished with our work, we go over to Room A161 and sometimes the food pantry to help sort and pack food for the Parkland Reach program. When we get extra food donations, we go through each box and organize the food to be put in the pantry.
We then stock the food on the pantry shelves by what type of food it is. Canned goods like beans and vegetables, boxes of snacks, soup, tuna, peanut butter, pasta, gravy, noodles, yellow cake, and vanilla cake, and any other foods we get.
Once we have stocked the food pantry, we start to make snack packs. There's a list of each type of food that goes into every bag, so we follow the list and add the items to each bag. When the bags are packed, we put them in A161 so they are ready to be handed out to the families each week.
We look at every food item and try to sort them into boxes by expiration date so we know how much time we have before they expire. If there are foods that are very close to expiring, we organize them to be donated to local food banks in our area.
Sometimes we make a game out of our work and stock the food to make pyramids of vegetables or even a bean tower.
We have lots of fun working together, and even though the work is hard, we know that it helps families and students that are in need. We love helping Mrs. Thompson and are looking forward to continuing to help during our journey at Spring House.
So before I show the video, I just want to tell you that they spoke about this bean tower for probably 10 to 15 minutes when we were talking about the presentation. So I said, I definitely want in on that next time we start building it because it sounds like something I'd definitely like to do. But we thank them for their service behind the scenes to make our program successful. So we'll present our video to you. Parkland Reach is a vital part of the Parkland School District that creates opportunities for students and families to access essential resources. These resources include, but are not limited to, food, clothing, school supplies, family engagement programs, and outreach services. Our goal is to eliminate barriers from learning and educate all students to become successful, contributing members of our society. Many of our students come to school each day not sure of where their next meal is coming from. They rely on our free breakfast and lunch programs for daily nourishment. But what do they do when school is not in session on the evenings and during the weekends? Students need materials at the start of the school year, like backpacks, pencils, folders, earbuds, clothing, and even haircuts to be successful. How do they access these materials when money may be limited? That's where Reach comes in and was created, to help meet the basic needs of our students and our families. Now, more than ever, it is essential for schools to assist our students and their families to help provide a level playing field so that every student can be successful, both in and out of the classroom.
My name is Ally Thompson, and I am a member of the Parkland Reach Committee, as well as a teacher at Spring House Middle School. A part of our program that was very successful this year was our back-to-school program, where we provided families with the opportunity to sign up for their students to receive a backpack filled with general school supplies. We also provided them with some additional items, such as a wireless mouse and earbuds to help them with their electronics. In addition to those items, we also had gift cards to a salon for the students to get a back-to-school haircut. Another part of our program is our snack packs. Our snack packs are distributed to students on a weekly basis. Typically, students will come to our pantry and pick up their snack pack, which provides them with some snacks that will hold them over throughout the weekend. On our long breaks, we also have food pantry boxes that we will distribute to families. We have a lot of resources where we get donations from various organizations, such as the Boy Scouts, local dance studios, that will help with some of the donations. For our snack packs, we receive the snack packs from Parkland Cares, as well as from the Rotary and Interact Club at the high school. Without those resources, we would not be able to do the things we can for our families. We also receive donations through our grants, through our Parkland Education Foundation. Without their support, none of this would happen.
My name is Brian Barone, and I'm a school psychologist at Spring House Middle School. I am also the co-founder of SMS Cares, which has morphed into Parkland Reach. Parkland Reach is a group of dedicated individuals within the Parkland School District who meet on a regular basis to meet and address the needs of our families and community in general. Most recently, Parkland Reach was able to work collaboratively over the Thanksgiving and winter holiday break to provide food and grocery items for our families in need. During this past Thanksgiving, we were able to provide upwards of 150 families with a frozen turkey or ham to be enjoyed as part of their holiday celebration. In addition, each family was able to receive a box of grocery items to help them meet the needs of their individual family members throughout the long winter break. I can tell you firsthand, from the volunteers who helped to deliver the meals, the sense of gratitude they felt in knowing that they were making a difference in the lives of our Parkland students and families.
Hi, my name is Megan Jenkins. I'm one of the guidance counselors here at Spring House Middle School, and I am our adaptive family coordinator. This is our sixth year, and it's a program where we involve the entire community and our school and our staff, where we nominate families who may not be able to provide their families with the holiday season that they hope to or wish for. So we have families that purchase gifts and donate, and we collect and we coordinate. This year, we were able to help 10 families with a total of 26 children. We were able to involve our student council students with our annual rapping party, which we include festive music where they rap, and it's a lot of fun. We coordinate the gifts and we give back to these families who may not be able to provide their families with the holidays that they would like to. I'm just so fortunate. It's so heartwarming to see our community coming together, and I think our students and our staff, you know, really see the value in it, and it's just such a pleasure for me to coordinate.
As we close our program, I just want to take a moment to thank you, the Parkland School District School Board, for your support of the Parkland Reach program. Without your unwavering support of our program and the programs of all of the schools here, we wouldn't be able to best serve our schools, our students, and our communities. In the words of Robin Williams, "Everyone you meet is fighting a battle that you know nothing about." And these programs allow us to help our families and our students through these battles to help them become successful learners and successful leaders in our community and in our world. So thank you, and thanks for all of your efforts as we support the Parkland School District. We are better together. Thank you. It's now my pleasure to introduce Mr. James Moniz, and he's going to talk about the high school's effort during the Kindness Crusade.
Thank you, Dr. Sont. Good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Madsen and fellow administrators. On behalf of the high school administration, teachers, and student body, we're here tonight to show our appreciation for the countless hours you've spent serving our school district. Your volunteer commitment to Parkland strengthens the connection between our community and the school district. Your willingness to share your time and talents for the benefit of all students and staff is a wonderful shining example of citizenry we know our community expects from our youth. They say imitation is the highest form of flattery. Tonight, Parkland High School demonstrates our appreciation Tonight, Parkland High School demonstrates our appreciation by showcasing how Parkland gives back, not just to Parkland, but to the greater Lehigh Valley and the community. Tonight, you hear from incredible student leaders representing Student Council, Key Club, Spanish Honor Society, Parkland Food Drive, Leo Club, and the Interact Club, with evidence of their kindness crusade in giving back. Now let me turn the mic over to Kylie Kenevo to lead our presentation off from the Student Council.
My name is Kylie Kenevo, and I'm the president of the Parkland High School Student Council. So far this school year, our programs have had a positive impact on the community. Our Student Council has hosted three main community events. In October, we held the Homecoming Dance and Events. The above picture was taken at the Garterable Game in front of the ticket booth. All of the profits we made at the Garterable Game, $1,500, were donated to our Parkland Reach program, a program that provides food and clothing to those in need. Another event we held was the Holiday Hope Chest. A group of Student Council members gathered together to wrap and donate gifts to the Lehigh Valley Volunteer Center for the holidays. In February and March, we will continue our community efforts by once again hosting our food drive. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Reagan Kenny, and I'm a senior in high school and the president of our chapter's Key Club at the high school. Key Club is a national organization dedicated to service character and leadership. At Parkland, we have 130 members in our club who will each volunteer 30 hours per year. Members demonstrate these ideals through various events in our community. Throughout the year, Key Club sponsors three blood drives in collaboration with Miller Keystone Blood Center at the high school. This allows staff and senior students to donate blood without going to an alternate location. The second blood drive is being held tomorrow. So, okay, the next event is Minute to Win It. So each year, Key Club sponsors the Minute to Win It fundraiser. This year, we had the largest turnout with 27 participating teams. Because of this fun event, Key Club was able to donate $1,000 to the Pediatric Cancer Foundation of the Lehigh Valley, a foundation that serves 11 families in our school district. At our November general membership meeting, Holiday Hope Chests were made. Our club filled 16 shoeboxes with gifts and toiletries to be distributed to the Lehigh Valley community members before the holiday season. We've always placed a heavy emphasis on supporting and volunteering within our local community. The main organization that Key Club supports are Parkland Cares, Food Pantry, South Whitehall Department of Parks and Recreation, the Schenexville Fire Company, Miracle League of the Lehigh Valley, the Humane Society, and the Lehigh Valley Zoo. Through our service at all of these places, we can give back to our community and grow as individuals and as a club. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Laura Valeri-Kintamia, and I will be representing Spanish Honor Society this evening. So I am the president alongside Mia Josephs, and we would just like to say thank you as a whole group, just for everything you do and for everything you're able to let us do as a Spanish Honor Society. So I would like to say that we initiated this year with 16 new members for the Honor Society, and we were able to hold the initiation ceremony. It was really awesome to see, since last year it was virtual, so this year we were able to actually have it in the auditorium. And we actually made little bags, goodie bags, for the students who got initiated that day, and it was really awesome. And we filled it up with Hispanic heritage things, and it was really awesome to see everybody go onto the stage and take a huge picture together. I will be presenting our projects that we have done so far. So we were able to collect a bunch of donations for the Stuff the Bus for Homecoming donations, and we actually got third place in the entire high school as a group, and that was a really big accomplishment, since we were able to help back to our community. We also participated in the Minute to Win It competition that Key Club held, and two of our teams actually were able to go into the competition. We won second place, which was actually my group, and I don't know how we did it. It was very difficult, but it was a really fun night, and it was awesome to see the entire school be able to participate in that. We also brought up a bunch of donations for the Lehigh Valley Hispanic American Association, and the entire club was able to give back to that association as well. And lastly, we donated a llama to the Hyfer International Organization, and we donated a llama to the family in Bolivia, and they were able to use that llama. It really goes a long way for that family, so that's what we have done so far. Thank you.
My name is Oli Waza, and I am here representing Ms. Morgan and Mr. Faschiano's 10th-grade American Studies II class for the Parkland Reach Winter Food Drive. For our You Know on the Progressive Arrow, we planned and ran the high school food drive to further explore the essential question of how an individual can affect society. To start the project, we had different groups assigned to different parts of the food drive. One group made posters and hung them up around the school. Another group emailed teachers and parents, and a third group wrote the script for our morning news. Then we collected the food from the donation boxes and counted and sorted the donations. We had originally set on a goal to feed 150 families, but in the end, we collected over 3,000 food items to be distributed to Parkland families before the winter break. I really enjoyed this project, because it made me feel like I was a part of something that was bigger than myself. While this year was successful, we hope to continue this project next year and to let it grow. I would like to spread the food drive to other schools in the district, and we hope to partner with a big grocery store, such as Giant and Wegmans, to help increase our donations. Overall, this was a great experience, and I believe it shows the power of the Parkland communities. Thank you for your time.
My name is Hannah Yang, and I'm a senior at Parkland High School, serving as the president of our Leo Club.
And my name is Damian Latilo, a fellow senior, and I'm serving as vice president. The Leo Club is the youth chapter of the service organization Lions Club International. We are one of the largest community service clubs at the high school, with over 100 active members each year.
Just this year, our club has collectively volunteered nearly 900 community service hours as of January. We have also fundraised to make several donations to our local community, including to the Parkland Education Foundation, the Alzheimer's Association, and to our very own Parkland families in need.
The Leo Club members are regular volunteers at Parkland Elementary Schools, the Lehigh Valley Zoo, the Parkland Cares Food Pantry, and the Schenexville Fire Company, to name a few.
As the Leo Club, we strive to serve our community and instill the core values of leadership, experience, and opportunities to all of our members. We want to sincerely thank the Parkland Administration and to our school board for your continued support as we grow our club and serve and give back to our community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kira Lively, and I'm the current president of the Interact Club, a Rotary-sponsored service club at the high school. Our focus this year, as in the past, is providing food for students in need throughout the district. We have worked to meet this need through our monthly snack packs, the Stuff the Bus campaign, and donations of fresh produce to Parkland Cares from the Allentown West Rotary Garden. Over the summer, we volunteered at this community garden, where we planted, harvested, and harvested vegetables to donate to Parkland Cares. Pantries in OMS, SMS, and the high school were filled with donated food from our Stuff the Bus food drive. In all of our projects, we're grateful for the continued support from the Rotarians. This is especially true of their help at our snack packs. With them, we're able to get more done in less time. Looking forward, we hope to help the community in new ways and expand the reach of our current projects. Thank you.
From last year to this year, it was a really amazing transition. Last year, to go through what we went through, just experience all that, and to know that these students primarily weren't fulfilling a lot of these roles, they weren't out in their community, they weren't living, breathing agents of change within the community. And to see them this year take off and really fulfill their mission, their purpose, and really what's great about when you know that the people that are in front of you here, they're fulfilling themselves and their souls. And I think that really speaks to the power of volunteerism, the power of their spirit, and what they take in terms of their responsibilities as future citizens. And I think all of you have demonstrated those characteristics throughout your terms of service as school board members, and we thank you, and we just definitely appreciate all that you do for our students and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moniz, and special thanks to all the students who participated this evening and also helped to put together this presentation, as well as the staff. I think Mr. Moniz said it very well at the end, that there is so much negativity that we see day in and day out, and a lot of stress, but what we've showcased this evening to show some of the human side and interaction that's still happening every day within our schools, and the impact that the decisions that the school board makes day in and day out, the positive impact that we have for our student body. So to the board, thank you for your commitment, your time, and your devotion to the Parkland School District. They are challenging times, but you chose that service to the children of this community, and that's very much appreciated, your leadership, stewardship, vision, and courage, and continues to make a positive impact for the Parkland School District. So once again, thank you. Thank you to the students and the staff.
Thank you very much. It's one of the finer nights that we see here is when the students come in and receive their awards for their academic, their arts, and their athletics accomplishments, but to see what they do to give back to the community showcased here tonight is just fantastic. So I really appreciate all the effort that was put into this and the service through all of our schools, from elementary to the high school. Moving on to item number 4.02, presentations, appreciation from the associations. Let me turn it back to Dr. Madsen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heine. And we have pinch hitting tonight. We have Amy Miller and Jane Cornati from the Parkland Education Association, as well as Elizabeth Moyer from our Parkland Education Support Professionals Association.
Good evening. My name is Amy Miller, and I am an eighth-grade civics teacher at Warfield Middle School, as well as the Parkland Education Association Middle School Vice President and number-one fan of the Take a Stand Band from Warfield. It's my pleasure to bring greetings on behalf of our president, Sandy Gockenbach, who is homesick this week, and the more than 670 Parkland educators who use support on a daily basis. We all sincerely appreciate the work that goes into being on the Parkland School Board of Directors, especially in this pandemic and political climate. Our thanks seem hardly enough. You're making decisions that impact the health and safety of not only the children, but the employees as well. We truly recognize the weight of those decisions, especially considering the fact that some will always be displeased by whatever you decide. Tonight, we take a moment to commend your hard work, your thoughtful deliberations, and praise your determination to do what is best for our district. On behalf of the Parkland educators, I thank you. Your efforts are so important to our community, and we offer our gratitude for your continued support of the staff and students of the Parkland School District. You helped to make our district a great place to work and learn. Thank you.
I just wanted to know that Sandy and I did not talk about our speeches together, and mine is going to sound very similar. She lets me go first, so now I'm really out here. I would like to start by welcoming Annette and Jarrett to our school board. You are joining an exceptional group of volunteers that make up our school board. They make it not only the best place to work in the Lehigh Valley, but more importantly, a great place to educate your children, as my husband Barry and I have done. I was thinking back to last year and how emotional it was for me to speak to all of you and convey how much we, the support staff, appreciate all you did to keep us, both our students and us, the staff, as safe as possible. The resources you provided, the custodians, helped give us all peace of mind through a really frightening time last year, when we didn't know how anything worked, and you were always there for whatever our custodians asked for. Parkland was giving them any kind of supply that helped make them feel more safe and made us feel safe in the job that they did. The incentive that you provided to our drivers shows the commitment that you feel for our transportation department, and while all districts are hurting for drivers, we really appreciate how you went out on a limb for us and did something to show your support. The longer I am in this role, the more I understand the challenges that you face to keep Parkland one of the top school districts in Pennsylvania. What you do isn't easy, but you have done a remarkable job, and as an employee and a former parent, our thanks goes out to each and every one of you. Thank you for all you have done and will continue to do for the Parkland community. We appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your words of support and appreciation. Moving on to item number five, approval of minutes previously presented on December 21st, 2021. At the school board meeting on December 21st, 2021, corrections were made to the minutes of the regular school board meetings of November 16th, 2021, and December 7th, 2021, and no corrections were made to the school board committee meetings held on December 13th, 2021. After the corrections were presented to the school board, the president did not ask for a motion to approve the minutes of those meetings or otherwise move to approve the minutes. Is there any objection to approving the minutes of the school board regular meetings on November 16th, 2021, and December 7th, 2021, as corrected, and the school board committee meetings on December 13th, 2021? Since there are no objections, the minutes of the regular school board meetings on November 16th, 2021, and December 7th, 2021, are approved as corrected, and school board committee meetings on December 13th, 2021, are approved as presented. If I could have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to number six, approval of minutes. If I can have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a comment. On page 10 of the meeting minutes for December 21st, 2021, vote on the motion. This is for the final motion of the meeting. It says, "Moved by Mr. Coleman, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Vote, seven aye, two nay." And on the roll call vote, it says, "Two aye, seven nay." If that could be corrected, that would be terrific.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number seven, any report of executive session? Mrs. Frisby?
Send a report.
Thank you. Moving on to number eight, acceptance of treasurer's report. If I could have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, public comment on agenda items. Before we begin the public comment, I'll summarize the most relevant portions of board policies and regulations that govern public comment at board meetings. The applicable school board policies are 903, public participation in board meetings, 903.1, use of electronic recording devices during board meetings, and administrative regulation is 006 AR00, request to speak at board meeting. The policies and regulations are available on the district's website. Only persons who have properly filled out the request to speak form prior to the beginning of the meeting will be permitted to provide comments. When it is your turn to speak, I will call you to the speaker's podium. You do not have to state your name or address, since that information is included in the request to speak form that you have completed. You'll have a total of three minutes for all of your comments. This time will be strictly enforced, although as board president, I have discretion to allow additional time if necessary and appropriate. No placards or banners will be permitted within the meeting room without prior approval. Recording devices are permitted, but you need to register your intent to use the device prior to its use with Assistant Superintendent Dr. Rodney Troutman. Under no circumstance may your recording device interfere with the ability of the board and others to participate in a meeting. Thank you for your attention. And tonight, we have four comments. I believe all of them are related to agenda items, so we will take them all at this time.
Good evening. Thank you for the three minutes that you give me. First, I want to thank you all for your service, your time. I didn't know Parkland was so involved in the community. It's really grateful to see that, that you're doing all these zoo drives. I do want to talk about the mask mandate. There's Jared, last committee meeting had given us so many cases to prove the fact that masks really don't work, especially with Omicron right now. We know it's spreading like crazy, the cases are through the roof, but the masks really don't prevent it. Everybody's getting it. We have plenty of cities to look at, New York City is a perfect example. Everybody's masked and a triple vax pretty much there, they're all still getting it. Hospitalizations are very low, deaths are very low, the rate of children being infected and surviving, their survival rate is like 99.997%. There is plenty of evidence, plenty of cases out there that tell us the masks do not do anything. This is going to infect everybody. Cats, dogs, deers are getting it throughout the world. Your masks are not going to stop it. We're all going to get it. Let's just take the mask off, let the kids live a normal life, let them see their faces, let them see them smile, let them see the reactions of their faces. We know this affects them. We know this has problems mentally, psychologically, it does affect them. There's plenty of evidence out there that shows that as well. I plead, I ask that the board do the virtuous thing. You do all these great things for the community. This is affecting the community through the kids. My kids are being affected by it. I see it every day. I see the kids in Timber Ridge Estates being affected by it. It has to end, please. There is no data that backs you up anymore, nothing. You have no scientific data anymore to back you up. It's all been revealed. Please let it stop. You're hurting these kids. The cure is worse than the disease at this point. This is not going to go away, ever. It's with us for the rest of our lives, just like the flu. We have to move on. We cannot live in fear anymore. If you continue to live in fear, this is what we're going to be like the rest of our lives in this United States of America. We're still free. We still have a choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Finley.
Thank you. I'm a proud Parkland parent. I'm also a scientist. What was just said is completely wrong. Their masks are not the cure-all. The virus is changing. There's a lot of data out there. I'm glad that the board is listening to experts, getting expert opinions, expert data. This is a frustrating situation for everyone. We are all tired of the masks, but frankly, it's one line of defense that lets our kids actually be in school, and we just throw them all away. How fast will it be that more people will end up in the hospital, more kids will end up sick? Yes, their overall rate is lower, but as it spreads faster, more kids are ending up in the hospital, in the ICUs. We're overwhelming our first line of defense, our second lines of defense, our doctors and nurses are all being swamped, and it's, you know, maybe we're almost there. I'm sort of hopeful, but I'm glad we're toeing the line here to try to keep us in school in a protective way. I'm glad most of the board is actually modeling wearing masks, and many people in the room here are, and I'm thankful for that. I'm here, but many people cannot be here because they're quarantined, or they have a relative who's sick, or they are sick with COVID. There are people that won't come because they're afraid of people not wearing masks, not being kind to their neighbors, being kind and mindful of what's going on. So I appreciate the board is taking all this into account. Let's hope we're almost at the end, but let's stick it out as long as we can to get to a safer place when the rates go down, when the number of people in the hospitals go down, when our medical staff isn't as stressed out as they currently are. Let's try to help each other with a relatively minimal kind of thing that wearing a mask represents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Beth Whitehall Finch.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm speaking tonight about great concern within our community. We've spoken out, we've emailed, we've had meetings and phone calls, yet we have not been heard. You've sent out surveys, but we never have the results shared with us. You say you care about our input, but it's becoming abundantly clear to us all that you must have been bought and paid for and have no intention of doing what's right for our children. The one survey you have not sent out is one asking us what we want for our children. We want to know who is in charge, who's making these decisions. We've witnessed the board hand over power to Dr. Madison and the administrators, yet we have no clue who is deciding to continue masking our children. These behaviors make us think you have something to hide. We've been told these decisions have nothing to do with the millions of dollars Parkland receives from St. Luke's and LVHN, yet nothing else seems to add up. We don't want to believe that you've been bought or that you're afraid to do the right thing, but that is 100% what seems to be happening. Either some entity has threatened you to keep masks on, or you somehow think it makes you look good to take away parents' rights. You have lost all of our trust in your decision-making skills, and more and more parents are seeking alternate options for education, including myself. You've had every opportunity to earn our trust, but you continue to exclude us from your decisions. You seem to work more for each other than for the people who elected you. I'm not sure what it will take for you to finally decide to let our kids breathe. What will you do if and when we win our next lawsuit? What excuses will we hear then? You've been made aware of your wrongdoings and just continue to do it. Will it take a lawsuit naming each of you as defendants to stop this? You keep telling us you're speaking to authorities and experts, but I'm sure you can agree that the best experts on children are their own parents. I would do anything to keep my kids safe, as I'm sure everyone else here would as well. If a parent decides to mask their own child, that is their right to choose, and they have the accountability for their child. But at this point, it has been proven that not only masks do not work in slowing or stopping the spread of COVID, but that our children are actually being harmed by mask-wearing. What will you do when everything we've been telling you all this time about the dangers of masking comes out through a study that you'll actually pay attention to? Will you be accountable then? How is it that there is no COVID when kids are on the basketball court or in a theater setting, but there is COVID in the stands and in the audience? Either there's COVID, or there's not. Stop the political nonsense and end the illegal mandate now.
Thank you. And the last speaker, Dietrich Katari? I apologize, I can't read the last name.
Hello, my name is Dietrich. I'm not here to talk about masks today. So first off, I am a student at Coates Town. I am trying to become a biology teacher, so I'm here today to view you guys, and so far, I like everything. So one part of observing and learning is being a part of it. So here I am today. Just a little bit ago, I went to the Parkland High School to do some of my student observations. I went the 12th, the 13th, and the 14th, and, you know, it was great. I had a great time there, a great time with the teacher. I learned a lot, absolutely a lot. It was a great time, great experience, and that's why I wanted to come to Parkland Board today. And the reason why I want to speak today is because I think that we need to just pay attention a little bit to the security, sorry, to the security that's going on in our schools. So for example, what I really did like was at the end of my day of training, the teacher had to escort me out of the school, you know, they had to walk me out. That's good and all, but the 12th, the 13th, the 14th, I managed to get into Parkland High School without having to state a name or purpose there. I wasn't doing it purposely, just casually walking in, maybe next to a student or substitute. But I mean, when you really come to think about it, this could be anyone. I was meant to be at Parkland High School at that time for this purpose, but this could be anyone. And having family and friends at the Parkland High School and at all the other levels, you know, this is really frightening to me that this can happen, that anyone could just really just walk into the school and it's all right. I'm not really here to, you know, cause any trouble or something like that. I just think it's something that we do need to pay attention to, you know, as a whole, because when you have students who are lacking education, lacking all this, you know, we can get better education, we can keep on improving our technology, we can improve the way that we teach, but if we have a student lost, we can't get it back, you know, we can't get that him or her, they back. We can't get the student back. I just think it's really important that we do pay attention to security, even if it's just a little bit more here and there. I really don't have much more to say, so thank you for listening.
That ends the public comment on agenda items. And moving on to number 10, resignation of David M. Kennedy from Parkland Board of School Would like to accept the attached resignation dated January 4th, 2022, of David M. Kennedy from the Parkland Board of School Directors, effective January 4th, 2022, at 7:30 PM. If I could have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item 11, COVID-19, approval of revision number two of Parkland School District Health and Safety Plan for the 2021-2022 school year. The administration recommends that the Board of School Directors approve the attached Parkland School District Revision Number Two of the Health and Safety Plan for COVID-19 effective for school year 2021-2022, herein called Revision Number Two Plan, or PLAN. The Revision Number Two Plan shall be signed by the president of the school board. Since the plan may be subject to further revision from time to time as required by changing circumstances or Commonwealth orders and guidance, the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized to implement changes to the plan as necessary, and thereafter, when required by the nature of the changes, may submit a revision of the plan for review and approval by the school board. This Revision Number Two Plan shall be distributed electronically to all school district staff and parents, guardians, students, and posted on the district website. If I could have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any comments or questions?
I have some comments and questions. I guess the questions for the board as a whole, since a lot of this is done behind closed doors, and none of the community really gets to see how we're making decisions on masks, on COVID-19. At most districts, this would be, the changes that are made to our health and safety plan would be considered official-agency business, and the boards are the ones that are trusted to make those decisions, not here. And so I guess I'd like to have a discussion with the board in front of the community to just consider one of two things, not giving the administration the full authority to modify this plan without coming to the board, which can then have input from the community. And I guess beyond that, as I review the health and safety plan, I see the Health and Safety Committee here. We have superintendents, assistant superintendents, directors of every department, every principal, school physician, and then a senior network director for urgent care and occupational medicine that's employed by St. Luke's, making decisions before a school board, just making a decision. I just don't know why this isn't, these meetings aren't public, and why... I feel like, I guess I would like to discuss, debate a little bit on it and get your input, if we could maybe each of us go down and discuss how we feel that this should not be, you know, I guess let's just, why do we let the superintendent modify the plan without coming to the board who's been elected to make these decisions? If it could be everyone except Dr. Madison, I appreciate that. I just want to get the board's input on this.
Well, I think that the decisions such as the health and safety plan, while we have to approve the plan, the decisions to run the district in all these ways, including the health and safety of the district, is the responsibility of the superintendent and the administration. Changes may be made, yes, but then they need to come to the board for approval. So even if they were put in place, the board could reject those changes and go back to the previous version of the plan, or a different version that's brought forward. So it's all of the governance versus management. So the board is the governance, the district is the administration, the superintendent is the management to run the day-to-day operations of the district.
So we've like outsourced our governance into the district to make changes? And I'm just trying to have a discussion here?
No, that's the management of, that's the responsibility, that's what hired the superintendent to do. The superintendent hired his staff, the teachers, the administrators to do that.
Okay, it just seemed like other school districts, like most of the other districts, except I think Bethlehem, who has a very similar health and safety plan, almost identical to us. Just my observations is that they maintain that this is agency, official-agency business, and as such, should be conducted in the sunshine. And in Parkland, we've given that away, and we're allowing official-agency business, you know, in my belief, to be done outside of the sunshine.
We don't believe that to be the case, and our solicitor and our superintendent also don't believe that to be the case.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a discussion. I would just like to discuss it, since we actually don't have the meetings of the committee in public. Maybe our discussion about it is allowed to be public, or I just don't understand how, it's agency business, and it was agency business at Parkland until it wasn't, and the board essentially neutered their authority by giving it away to the administration. It was official-agency business. I just don't, even though we give it away, are we allowed to give away our governing authority? And are we allowed then to change what needs to be in the sunshine and what doesn't? I guess it's just a question I have. I'm getting a lot of people asking me, what's being changed? And I have no idea, because as a board member, I'm not involved in discussions of policy impacting the community in this. It's being done behind closed doors.
You're not characterizing it the way it really happens. The school district business is conducted by the administration and by the entire staff of the school district. Not everything happens in public. You would never get anything done if everything had to be done at a public meeting. The task of the administration, the task of the entire staff of the school district, is to carry out policy that's established and made by the board. They do that not in public, they do it in their individual offices, in the performance of their duties. That's what they do. And part of those duties involve the tailoring and writing and collecting data and... And part of those duties involve the tailoring and writing and collecting data and preparing a safety and health plan, which is what is enforced tonight. The authority, you're not delegating authority. What you're doing here, that provision that allows the superintendent to tweak this plan if necessary and appropriate, that's done because the school board only meets this year once a month. But last year, the same phrase was in the, it was in the agenda item, and the school board was meeting twice a month, and the committees meet once a month. That phrase is in there to allow flexibility and the ability to pivot, because this COVID-19 is a very, very fluid and quick-changing situation. Variants come about, all kinds of things are happening, and it's unpredictable. If the school district needed to wait until the school board was able to meet and react to a particular situation, that could put the safety and health of our community in great danger. That's why the authority is given to the superintendent. But it's not a blanket authority. That authority that allows him to make a decision quick and fast when it needs to be done, that decision then comes back to the board. If you don't like the decision that was made, or for some reason you don't disagree with the decision that was made, you'll have an opportunity to reverse that decision within just a couple of weeks after the decision was made. That's why it's in there. It needs to be in there, you can't take it out. That would be a derogation of duty if you took that phrase out that allowed him to make swift and quick decisions when they need to be made.
So we're the only ones doing this right then in the whole area, I guess, if all the other districts are? The board maintains power and authority to govern over this. Or, I mean, I just, I'm just struggling to, I get what, I do respect the ever-changing dynamics of COVID, but we could call a special meeting, we could call an emergency meeting, we could give 24 hours notice, we could put it out to the board, I think anyone would try and, you know, I think that that would be acceptable.
Well, let me just.
How are we the only, you know, how are we the only two?
You can call an emergency meeting, you can call a special meeting, you're right, you can do all that. But let me just correct one thing. Not all other districts are outside, we're not outside the box here. As you know, I represent another school district, I represent another school, and I'm telling you, this is the way it's done. Now, I can't say I'm familiar with every district in Lehigh Valley, but it would surprise me to learn that this is not how it's done. But it doesn't matter how it's done. The question is, is it legal? In my opinion, it's legal, it's appropriate, and it's necessary.
Because the official, there is no official business being discussed in terms of the health and safety of, we're saying that, we're saying that agency business does not involve the health and safety of the students of the district.
The school district conducts agency business all the time by the administration. The only time that, that agency business has to be conducted in a public setting is when the board meets at an organized advertised meeting, then, and to discuss, deliberate, and take official action, that's when it has to be at a public meeting. The administration can, they, they don't have to meet in public, that's not, that's not a requirement of the sunshine law. Only the board has to meet in public, in order, and only when they're going to be deliberating and taking official action on school district business.
And the health and safety plan would not be considered?
Well, it is, that's what they're doing tonight. They're gonna, that's what we're doing right now, we're deliberating, we're, and they're going to be taking official action on the safety, health, and plan in a public advertised meeting. That's what they're doing tonight.
So the individual meetings, much like when the board discusses something at a committee, I'm just trying to understand, but much like at a committee meeting where the board discusses things, we don't get to see anything that happens?
Well, although the three committees, you can, I mean, they're public meetings. But, but do you get to see what the administration is doing in their individual offices? No, you don't get to see that. They're performing their duty, they're doing about their day-to-day duties, part of which is to prepare and, and, and set down this, this health and safety plan. That's part of their duties. It's not, it's not, the public doesn't come in and watch that. The public has an opportunity to comment on it, they did comment on it tonight, it was on the agenda for everybody to see, and now is the opportunity to provide their comments, and that's what they're doing.
And also with the, the public meetings for our committees, the AAA, PNF, Buildings and Grounds, this was brought to all of those committees, and, you know, three of us are members of each of those committees, you're a member of one as well. So that was brought forth for discussion and comment there as well, in a public setting, for all of us to see. And also, you know, it may, you and Annette are both new to the board, so maybe you haven't had a chance to see some of this come forward, but the administration, whether it's this administration or previous administrations, as things come forward and come up in the day-to-day business that affect things, they bring that information to us, you know, bring it to the, the board president and vice president, whoever's sitting in these seats, and then, you know, bring it to the rest of the board as needed, you know, prior to the meeting, so everyone is updated. So we have seen all of this, we have had a chance to ask our questions in a public setting, and to understand and ask the administration to go back and make changes if we feel it's necessary.
Right, I just can't see, you know, I can't see minutes of these, this health and safety committee, I can't see what recommendations, you know, were made, the public can't see that. They're just, I guess, glad we had the discussion, but.
If I could just add?
Sure.
The administration in this case, as well as pretty much every item on this agenda, we meet and discuss with our staffs in a collaborative approach to make some recommendations to the board. The board then makes the final determination and decision for these action items. If the board as a whole would decide to vote no on this item or any item, we would go back to the drawing board, meet again to revise that plan. You see the information being provided as a result of those meetings that we have. The plan is a result of those meetings. The communication that we sent out to the community through the video, even through the survey, that's a result of those meetings, day after day, week after week, with ourselves, with our medical community, to make those recommendations. And that's all of this, is a recommendation based on the administrative, administration's expertise, knowledge, and input from the team and community. The board then makes the final decision for how we move forward.
Okay. And just in reviewing the, the health and safety plan, I noticed that there's, you know, continued masking, I just, I wonder if, as a board, we should think about if we have the authority to mask the children? I think we need to ask ourselves, do we have this authority? If the Department of Health doesn't have the authority, how do, how do we have the authority if we cite them? I just don't want to be in a situation where we're being sued over medical battery over these children. I just, I'm just not comfortable with keeping, taking votes to keep the children in masks. I mean, Solicitor Miller, do we have the authority to, to vote to keep the children in masks?
Yes, you have the authority. The authority is found in, in the school code, there's a section in the school code, I think it's in Article Four, that allows the school board to make rules and regulations for the efficient operation of the school district. It's a very broad authority, and that's exactly what the school district has done in creating their policy manual, all their rules, all their procedures, they're following that school code provision that authorizes the board to do exactly what they're doing, part of which is to adopt a health and safety plan for the health, safety, and welfare of the school community.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the discussion, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? All for this, or are we just doing voice? All right, and we have a motion and a second on item number 11. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, that motion carries. Seven to one. Moving on to committee reports, academics, arts, and athletics, Mrs. Ziegler.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. Item 12.01, approval of agreement between Loving Care Agency Inc., DBA Aviana Healthcare and Parkland School District. The committee recommends that the board approve and authorize the board president to execute the attached agreement between Loving Care Inc., DBA Aviana Healthcare and Parkland School District to provide nursing care services based on a rate of $50 per hour or $75 per hour if substitute nurses are needed, effective July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. The contract may be canceled at any time for any reason by providing 30 days' advance notice of termination. Can I make a motion to approve?
Thank you. If I could have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number 13, Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Fuze.
Thank you. We have three items to bring up from committee. The first, 13.01, the committee recommends that the school board approve and authorize the board president to execute the quotation from MCH Equipment Inc. of Feasterville, PA, dated December 7th, 2021, for the purchase of a Speed Queen 55-pound soft-bound washing machine and base frame for a total price of $19,195. The price includes delivery and installation, and I make that motion.
Thank you. If I could have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries.
Item 13.02, the committee recommends that the board approve and authorize the board president to execute the attached declaration of covenants and easement for maintenance of stormwater management facilities entered into between the township of South Whitehall and the Parkland School District, which provides for the district's responsibilities to construct and provide for the adequate maintenance of the onsite stormwater management facilities. The declaration will be recorded in Lehigh County as a permanent record. Can I make that motion?
Thank you. If I could have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 13.03, the administration recommends that the board of school directors ratify and confirm and authorize the school district administration to carry out all actions necessary of a ministerial nature, both past, present, and future, related to the Kratzler Elementary School Classroom Edition, including but not limited to signing of all documents and plans for obtaining governmental review and approval, and I make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 14, Personnel Finance Committee, Ms. Faschiano.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. We have a number of items. 14.01 is personnel. First is retirements and resignations, A through R. Request for unpaid leave of absence, item A. Request for child-rearing leave of absence, A and B. Request for extension of child-rearing leave of absence, item A. Request for FMLA, A and B. Employment of personnel, A through, should be, that's not right. It should be L, I didn't see the K. So we need to correct that. There's two duplicates. And approval of day-to-day substitute list. And I make a motion to approve that item.
Thank you. If I could have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 14.02, graduate credit reimbursement for personnel who have properly submitted their credentials and receipts as appended. It is recommended that these staff members be reimbursed at the contracted rate, and I make a motion to approve that item.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 14.03, the committee recommends the school board adopt the resolution as attached for the purpose of issuing general obligation bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $16 million 500,000, $16 million 500,000, in accordance with parameters set forth in the resolution. And I make a motion to approve that item.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? And we do have Scott Shear and Jens Domgard from our finance team here, if anybody has questions for them as well.
Just one question, I'd appreciate if the administration could give us a general idea, although we've discussed this in committee, we all know in detail, but for the record for our public meeting, an overview of where their spending will be allocated.
So the primary use of the funds will be for the Kratzler addition, final closeout of Schnucksville Elementary Project, as well as fleet replacements, or bus fleet replacements have been funded out of these proceeds, as well as some other smaller capital projects associated with summer projects, such as roofs, driveways, some of those smaller needs across the summer projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 14.04, the committee recommends that the board of school directors adopt the attached resolution pursuant to Section 311 D1 of Act One of 2006, that resolves that the school board will not increase any school district tax for the 2022-2023 fiscal year at a rate that exceeds its index of 3.4%, as calculated by the Department of Education for fiscal year July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. And I make a motion for, to approve that item.
Thank you. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And the last item is 14.05. The committee recommends the school board approve the appointment of Jonathan Komornitsky, North Whitehall Township, Kevin Hodrick of Upper McConge Township, and Scott Adams III from South Whitehall Township, as deputy tax collectors, as appointed by the tax collectors in each of their respective townships. The appointed and approved deputy tax collectors shall be authorized to receive and collect any or all of the taxes in like manner and with like authority as the tax collector appointing the deputy. The tax collector shall be responsible for and account to the school district for all taxes received and collected by the deputy. The school, the school board, approval of the deputy tax collector named herein is conditioned upon the deputy of being approved by the tax collector's authority and respective township. And I make a motion to approve that item.
Thank you. If I could have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And the last item, this is the first reading, 14.06, of three, three board policies that we will not be voting on tonight, tonight's just the first reading. Policy number 006, local board procedures of meetings. Policy 610, finances purchased subject to bid quotation. And policy number 611, which is finances purchases budgeted. So we aren't going to vote on that tonight, we will wait till the next meeting.
Thank you.
And that ends my report.
And if there are any questions on those policies, please direct them to the administration. Moving on to number 15, approval of memorandum of understanding between Parkland School District and Parkland Education Support Professionals Association. The administration recommends that the board of school directors approve the attached memorandum of understanding between Parkland School District and Parkland Education Support Professionals Association pertaining to bus drivers and school vehicle drivers. If I could have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Just make a comment if I could, I think it's a great idea. I think bus drivers are so important in trying to, you know, fix a problem that we have with the supply and everything else. I think it's a great idea to reward the bus drivers and try to keep our kids getting to the schools.
Absolutely agree. Any other comments?
I just want to add too, I think it's a great idea. Bus drivers ensure that children that ride on the buses arrive to school and leave school safely, on their way to school, on the way back home, and with the shortages we're seeing nationwide, including but not limited to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I believe this is a very good step in the right direction in ensuring that we keep and/or increase the amount of bus drivers that we have working for our incredible district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to reports, CLIU, I believe is. Moving on to reports, CLIU, I believe is...
Meeting is next Monday, so I'll have it next month. Thank you.
All right. Lehigh Carbon Community College, we had our, I had my first meeting there at the beginning of January. The normal items that are presented to us through the finance and the personnel committees were reviewed, forgetting that we were here in person and not having computers. I don't have a printout of the minutes, but I will get that to everybody. Ms. Faschiano, Parkland Education Foundation?
I don't have a report tonight, thanks.
Okay. And I do not have a legislative report. Are there any other reports? Hearing none. Moving on to item 17, approval of accounts payable. If I could have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Comment? Please note that my positive vote will not reflect my positive feelings towards charter schools.
I second.
We have a financial obligation that the state has mandated. We have no accountability of those finances. We have no accountability of the quality of education that cyber schools provide. So although my vote will be mandated to pay for that, I have no support of that area at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I second my colleague's statements with that regard, but I'd also like to add, you know, on the topic of charter schools, here's an example of a lack of transparency that I've been seeing come of late, that concerns me personally. You look at the likes of some of these, I'm not going to name them all by name, but there's some in Allentown, some in Bethel who are purchasing property with taxpayer-collected monies. And sometimes they'll use, they'll put that in a different fund that doesn't necessarily purchase it, like a foundation. And the reality is, once they do that, the ability to see where the money's spent goes downhill from there. It's not transparent. And so for those reasons, I too cannot support cyber charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 18, public comment on non-agenda items. There are none this evening. Moving to roundtable, starting on this side, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I have nothing to add, other than it was a great meeting. It always is when we have board appreciation.
Thank you. Ms. Faschiano?
I just want to thank everybody that put the presentation together tonight. At the elementaries, the middle school, the high school, that was a lot of work, not to mention all the work that the staff and gave these students to run these programs. The Kindness Crusade at the elementary school, what a phenomenal way for the kids to show how they can give back to the community, identify the needs of the community. The OMS, that Take a Stand Band, it just, what a way to, you know, make anti-bullying, excite the kids, bring them together with music. I think it's just great. Reach 22 at Spring House, it's phenomenal what these kids are doing in our community. And like I said, it, you know, some of them, maybe it's just making them aware of the needs that are out there. So, and also the high school, all those clubs and organizations. And what's nice is we're teaching these kids at such a young age to be compassionate about the people around them. So, I can't think that that will just be, you know, great citizens when they're out of our school district and on to their futures. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilcox?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Ms. Faschiano said. I know most of the students and family have left, but there's some administrators probably here. Just wanted to thank them for coming out and sharing their Kindness Crusade projects. All of them were amazing, not just for their creativity, but for their ability to be agents of change for our community. I think as adults, we have a lot to learn from these little kids, and not-so-little kids, and just wanted to thank them again.
Thank you. Mr. Fuze?
President Hein, I request my remarks be placed in the record. Jonathan Larson, the Pulitzer Prize-winning composer of Rent, once wrote, "525,600 minutes. How do you measure measure a year?" In writing Seasons of Love, Larson attempted to measure the human life and write about what he knew, to live each day as if it was one's last, and to embrace kindness, openness, and acceptance. In the midst of all the COVID-19 clamor, how can we measure our lives in 2022? Let's start measuring by all being the standard bearers of respecting our school community and neighbors, even when their perspectives and opinions differ from ours. It is perfectly normal to agree to disagree. Neither side has to be right. Different opinions should promote debate, not abuse. Let's not jeer, boo, or give standing ovations for the littlest remarks." Larson further wrote in Tic Tic Boom, "Why do we play with fire? Why do we run our finger through the flame? Why do we leave our hand on the stove, although we're in for some pain?" He would finish the song with, "Actions speak louder than words. Our actions directly influence how the next generation will lead. We're educating Generation Z to think critically and look outside of the box to solve complex problems that can one day change the world. These are all things within their grasp. Teaching by example the importance of unimpeachable character, displaying professionalism, and treating others with respect, shows our students how to be effective leaders. It is my hope that we achieve these things in 2022." Thank you, and I yield back my time.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman?
It always humbles me every January when we have board appreciation night. I want to thank my colleagues for the work that they do and for allowing me to share in the responsibilities that we have as board members. But it does cause me to reflect upon who I think we should be thanking for the success that we've witnessed this evening with our kids. Who teaches our kids kindness? Who teaches them anti-bullying? Who teaches them how to reach into the community? And who teaches them how to give back? It's our teachers. It's our bus drivers. It's our cafeteria workers. It's our administrators. The people who make Parkland great are the adults in the room that give model roles to our kids and teach them what they need to learn as human beings to exist within a community. So I do appreciate the reflections upon the board and the work that we do, but I know that the real thanks goes to the adults in the room, and I thank them.
Thank you. Mrs. Frisbee?
I'd just like to thank everybody on the board for their service.
Thank you. Mrs. Roth?
We always love, of course, when the students come to business at the board meetings and tell us what they're doing, you know, in arts, academics, athletics, everything. During the pandemic, we've had to rely a lot on Laura to supply us with the pictures in the meantime, and then we've had some videos here and there. Tonight, we were so fortunate, we had both. We were double lucky tonight. I made a bunch of notes as they were going through all of them about what I want to make sure I want to contact and that I can get involved when they do these again. I definitely want to get a Take a Stand Band CD, so somebody's got to let me know where I can get that. And the cherry on top for me tonight, though, I think was Mr. Sont quoting Robin Williams. I thought that was just, for me at least, that one touched me. So, thank you all for everything this evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. I greatly appreciate the time and thought that has gone into the health and safety revisions. Thanks, as always, to our administrators for their hard work and for listening to the medical experts and making some adjustments that can be made in order to make being in school easier and more enjoyable. Many districts that have made masks optional in December are now returning to requiring masks in January. My main objective in overseeing as a board member has always been to keep kids in school as much as possible. I know what a difference it can make when students' learning is interrupted by quarantines and illness. Masking for the time being is our best option for keeping kids in school, and I fully support the revision. In addition, I wanted to say thank you so much to all of the elementary teachers, counselors, principals, students, and families who organize the Kindness Crusade projects. You all had such wonderful, unique, and beautiful ways to help your community. Your stories are truly inspiring. I love the Take a Stand Band and the way that you all combine music, fun, and anti-bullying. It's just such a neat idea. Thank you also to the three student presenters who helped organize the food bank for the Parkland Reach program. It was also wonderful to hear from our high school students who have done a remarkable job working together to help each other and the community. You have all made being up here so worth it. Thank you for sharing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out again and speaking up about the education of your children and the education that the district provides to the community. Thank you for the teachers and support staff for teaching our children to be so kind. I really appreciate that. I'd like to ask the board, I guess I have a question. If there's a board policy that I'd just like to discuss for a second, 006, Local Board Procedures, triple zero, 006. I see a common theme that comes at a lot of the meetings, I mean, except tonight, but allowing the community only three minutes to speak. I wonder if we cannot allow the community to speak, let's just go for four minutes, just to make sure that the community can get their, let their voice be heard? So, in order to, Solicitor Miller, in order to change the, to make a board policy change, you have to have a first reading, but then would I also have to make a vote to amend the agenda, to have a discussion on amending that board policy to allow four minutes to have a discussion on that quick?
I think the administration can respond to that, but let me just quickly or briefly say that, that there's a policy committee. So, everything that goes into these policies is reviewed and prepared by a policy committee. And the policy committee then brings it forth to the board in accordance with another policy that requires, you know, a first reading and ultimately, if there's any changes that take place as a result of the first reading, then it's revised, and then it comes back to the board ultimately for final approval and adoption. So, there is a process, and yes, you can have your input into that process, and you can, you can state your position that if you want to expand public comment from three minutes to four minutes, I mean, that can be done, but it's going to have to be done through, through a change in the policy and eventually an adoption of that policy by the entire full board.
Okay. So would we ask the committee, would the board then ask the committee to consider changing policy to allow four minutes of community?
Yeah, that's part of the Personal Finance Committee. It's, you know, kind of, we shorten the name when we use it in conversation, but it's the Personal Finance Policy Committee, so that can be brought back to our committee. You're on that committee as well, and, you know, we can take that, you know, ask for recommendations to make that change, and if, you know, comes to the rest of the board, then...
Okay. Yeah, because I think I'd just like to see the public not ever have to be cut off at one of our meetings, so if we could try four minutes maybe first, but we can try that in committee then.
We can bring that to the next committee meeting then.
Okay. Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Quintanilla?
I just want to say thank you to all of you. I know being in the Parkland School District and elementary school, I've been able to witness a lot of these really cool events. I mean, I witnessed the Take a Stand Band, which is a very awesome event that we were able to see, and it was just really awesome, and I'd just like to say thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everybody that put together the presentations tonight. I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, but I also want to thank everybody who, the children, for participating in those activities and learning and growing, you know, not just through numbers and reading and history, but through giving back to the community and learning of service. So I appreciate all of that. You know, a lot of, you know, times, you know, usually every meeting we have comments which are very much appreciated on the effect of cyber charter schools here in the district and across the state. I think all of us appreciate and support school choice, because, you know, schools are out there for whatever reason for parents to choose for their children, you know, whether they're traveling in gymnastics or, you know, doing whatever else that, you know, some of these schools may offer that Parkland or any other district does not. However, in agreement, that choice has to be done fairly and equitably across the public school districts. You know, charter and cyber charter schools are public schools, but they are governed by slightly different rules for management, for transparency, and for use of funds, and that has to be equitable, and we all fight and advocate for that nearly daily at the local and the state level. So, you know, just some background on that, that, you know, it really needs to be done equitably, and right now it is not. It is stacked against the districts in a lot of ways. So thank you for that. And Dr. Madsen?
Great. Thank you. I'd already shared a heartfelt thank you to our students and staff for that appreciative presentation this evening. Again, appreciate the board for their service and their time. Just want to take one second to thank all of our retirees today. Again, if you look at that list and the years of experience that we're losing within the Parkland School District, and we thank you for your service to our kids, and also welcome to all of our new employees, to the Parkland family. We very much appreciate you choosing Parkland School District, and we can't wait to have you get started. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I could have a motion for adjournment?
Still moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next school board meeting is special board meeting on January 25th, next Tuesday at 7:00 PM. Committee meetings February 7th, 5, 6, and 7 o'clock, and a board meeting February 15th at 7:00, with a budget seminar on April 29th. Thank you, and have a good night. Get home...